Good afternoon, everyone. We have a special meeting of the City Council of the City of Cape May, New Jersey. We are here in the Cape May City Hall Auditorium. It is Tuesday, August 15, 2023. The time is now 1:31. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Under the Open Public Meetings law, notice that this meeting was sent to the Cape May County Herald and the Press of Atlantic City, and a copy of the agenda was delivered to each member of City Council and posted on the Cape May City website and Cape May City Hall bulletin board. Notice is hereby provided that Cape May City Council meetings are audio recorded and video streamed live. Live video streams are posted to the Cape May City website. The City of Cape May is not responsible if audio recording or live video streaming of a meeting is unavailable. Roll call. Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Here.
Councilmember McDade?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Here.
Mayor Melick?
Here.
Councilmember Yeager?
Here.
City Solicitor Gillen Schwartz?
Here.
City Manager Vahl?
Here.
And Deputy City Clerk Dillon?
Here.
Council, we have one resolution for the special meeting. It's 2-1-2-08-2023. A resolution providing for a meeting not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act and JSA 10:4-12. This is for a discussion on middle-management collective bargaining agreement, upper-management collective bargaining agreement, coamateur, discussion of intergovernmental transfer issues, and affordable housing deed restriction for 1134 Lafayette.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Melick?
Yes.
Mayor, would you like to do the public portion at this point?
We'll open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, we can close public comment.
Time is 1:34.
1:34. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. We're coming out of closed session and need to close that. Do I have a motion to close the special meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any result of that, Mr. Solicitor?
The only official action that I think council anticipates is taking action on the middle management collective bargaining agreement.
Thank you. Okay. We have a motion and a second roll call. Do we need that?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Good to move forward to the regular meeting.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Today, we have a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cape May, New Jersey. We are here in the Cape May City Hall Auditorium. It is Tuesday, August 15th, 2023. The time is now nine minutes past three o'clock. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Under the open public meetings law, notice of this meeting was sent to the Cape May County Herald and the press of Atlantic City, and a copy of the agenda was delivered to each member of City Council and posted on the Cape May City website and bulletin board. Notice is hereby provided that Cape May City Council meetings are audio recorded and video streamed live. Live video streams are posted to the website. City of Cape May is not responsible if audio recording or video streaming of a meeting is unavailable. Roll call. Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Here.
Councilmember McDade?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Here.
Mayor Malak?
Here.
Councilmember Yeager?
Here.
City Solicitor Gillen Schwartz?
Here.
City Manager Val?
Here.
Deputy City Clerk Dillon?
Here.
And City Engineer Paul Dietrich?
Here.
And, Council, I believe we have an addition tonight, if you'd like me to read it.
Yes, please.
Okay. One addition to the agenda is Resolution Number 223-08-2023, a resolution approving a memorandum of agreement between the City of Cape May and the Government Workers Union Middle Management Unit, and authorizing the execution of a new collective bargaining agreement between the parties covering the period of January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2024.
Do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Malak?
Yes.
Okay. And... Mayor, would you like to move just to the City Manager and City Solicitor update so I can prepare the monitor for the presentation?
That's perfect. Sounds good. City Manager, any updates today?
I'll be brief. We're kind of winding down there from our summer season. Some of the beaches we have to close because some of the guards are going back to college and school. As far as traffic, the solar speed limit signs that we ordered, five of them requested by council. The first one's been installed this afternoon on Elmira, and there's five other locations will be going out in the next week. Other than that, a lot of personnel issues we're dealing with. The city's running really well with all the employees we have. And any other updates, I'll email you guys just for the time of the meeting today.
Thank you very much. City Solicitor?
For council's information, we had an ordinance regarding changing some traffic conditions on Jackson Street last meeting that was tabled. And in discussions with the city engineer and with Chief Fashaw, there's really three options for Jackson Street right now, three main options. One is do nothing. Two is allocate some additional loading zones, which was reflected in that proposed ordinance from last meeting. And that would just continue the flow of traffic the way that it is today. And then there's a third option where there's actually an opportunity to shift traffic and parking and swap them. Put parking on the left side and loading zones on the left side and put the flow of traffic on the right side. And in discussing those various options and trying to perhaps alleviate some of the conditions and flow of traffic down there, it occurred to everybody in the discussion that this is really a community issue. And when I say community, I mean the people that are living and interacting with Jackson Street. And it seemed like a good opportunity to present the three options that are out there that the city may consider and get an informal poll from the property owners in the area to get a complete picture of how the people that actually interact with Jackson Street on a daily basis view the problem and the potential solution. So with council's direction, I think that will be the next step for the professional staff to... Mr. Dietrich has a sort of draft plan showing the two options of how to address potentially the issue. And then that could be coupled with a narrative explanation and then essentially a vote card to each property owner in that area. And then that would allow council to have the feedback from the neighborhood as to which, you know, which option they prefer. And at least you have an informal poll from the area.
Sounds like a good point.
I think hearing from the neighborhood, of course, is the main issue. I mean, we don't want to do something that's going to, you know, really offend the neighborhood there unless we really needed to do something, of course. But I think this has been well discussed for many, many years. So to hear from them directly, I think, makes a lot of sense.
Mayor, if I may, the city engineer would like to give an update on a few things we've been working on together. And his name has just been brought up, but not only that issue, but other ideas. If you would, Paul.
Sure.
Thank you, Mike. The first thing is I wanted to give council and the public a heads up. We've awarded an emergency repair for Walters Marine to do the outfall repairs on Ocean Street based on their material delivery and the tide schedule because this work really has to be done in coordination with low tide. They're going to mobilize their equipment at the end of Madison Avenue on Friday, the 25th. And then they're going to start Monday, the 28th, and it should be three days for them to complete the work. So it'll be that Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, starting Monday, the 28th. I just got off the phone with them this afternoon, so that's...
It's great to see that moving.
Hopefully, it'll help improve that drainage issues that we've been having on gurney. The other thing is, we talked to our IT consultant, DCS, this morning.
Mr. Dietrich, do you mind if I just comment on what you just said?
Sure.
I do want to compliment you and to all of council, too. We've been dealing with that outflow pipe, and it's been blocked. It gets blocked by sand. It's just an outflow pipe that goes out onto the beach. And luckily, through sand nourishment, it's actually been covered. So there's a good thing because we have the sand, but now it gets covered, and so we have an issue. It gets backed up out onto the street because the water's not outflowing. But Paul met directly with DPW, who had been hand shoveling at low tide before storms to try to alleviate the issue. But you recognized pretty quickly that the pipe had actually fallen, had actually dropped because of the cribbing giving away. And that not only could the pipe actually move up because it had enough pitch that we could get new cribbing under it and redo it. So I just want to give you compliments right away. You recognize that, and that probably saved us a lot of money from redoing an entire section of pipe.
Quick question on that project. Is it going to have...
Quick question on that project. Is it going to have an effect on the beachgoers in that area?
Obviously, for those three days, you know, we'll have safety fence off there, close off that area right around the outfall. You know, they'll probably have, you know, 50 to 100 feet either side of that just to kind of keep a safety zone in that area. And they'll have that caution taped off for those three days that they're working.
So would that be announced in the morning from, you know, some of the announcements that could be done?
It could be from the...
Make an announcement, you know, in the morning so that people know not to start going down there, setting up chairs before they might get down there and put the fence in.
They'll be up there. They're going to be up there first Monday morning before the beachgoers are out there. They'll be out there seven o'clock before most beachgoers are setting towels up.
Or something on Facebook or something.
Merrill Reese.
Well, yeah, if we can give them a call, special announcement. Yeah. The gurney street outplay is being worked on. Thank you.
And then the other thing, just as I was going to continue on with the IT. We have a resolution on for the consent agenda, Number 218-08-2023. And that was to extend a change order for our current IT contract. In discussions with them this afternoon, we were reviewing our JIF requirements for cybersecurity. And essentially, there's two tiers. There's a, you know, I'll say the, what they kind of, the basic requirement. And that comes with a fairly sizable deductible if we do have a cybersecurity issue. Or if we go to a more advanced level, it reduces our deductible to zero. The one component that we would be required to do, and I kind of put an estimate out to everybody this, before the meeting, is to set up this RMM service for each computer. And that kind of helps, you know, bring us up to the level, you know, I think he feels that this is kind of the last step that would bring us up to that advanced level. So whereby, you know, not only does it enhance our security awareness for cybersecurity, but it'll put us at the highest level for JIF protection.
To the highest level, Paul?
Correct.
And that was a requirement for the JIF by, I think, the end of this calendar year?
Correct. And that's for advanced level. I mean, we're going to meet the, I'll say, the basic level. But this would be to get us to advanced level to reduce our deductible, which I think that's important to do. So, you know, it would be an additional cost above what the change order that you have on for consideration. So we talked to Chris earlier about whether or not we want to pull the resolution so you can, you know, see it in final form. But that would be an additional amount that'd have to be added to that change order.
Okay. Can I just ask, what is the deductible? Do you have that information by any chance?
I think it's somewhere between $7,500 and $10,000.
So this is a return on investment?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, hopefully, we never have to have...
Because the bill, or not bill, but the estimate that we're looking at here is for $6,360.
Could be added on to that change order.
To be added on to the existing change order in the resolution. Okay.
Potentially authorize it by an amendment tonight if council wanted to do that.
Can I ask a quick question about that? Because I read through that. I don't know if we need to introduce it and then, or pull it from the consent agenda. I had questions about it. Is it appropriate to discuss that now?
Let's get to it then. We'll pull it then.
We'll pull it then. Okay. I want to make sure I'm staying in order. Okay.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Dietrich?
No, that's all I had. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for that report. And on to the presentation, correct? Are we ready? With us this evening, we're pleased to have with us the... What's your title? President of MAC? Jody, or just everything? Director and CEO. To provide an update on a nice video presentation that was done on the economic impact that MAC has on the city of Cape May, which I know, we all know how much they do. But to see it in financial numbers is pretty compelling, so.
Appreciate that, Mayor. Thank you. And if I could just take a moment to acknowledge some folks in the audience that are here in support, some board members. Bob Gorgone is here, our media past president, Tom Carroll, Janet Copeland, whose voice you will, she's our secretary, but her voice is on the video. Lee Bellarmino is here, Tina Engstad is here, and Mary Stewart, who most of you know, who has been a MAC employee. She's our chief outreach strategist, celebrating her 37th year with Cape May MAC. So thank you for your support. And thank you, Mayor.
Sorry. Jody, could you just give a bit more into the microphone?
Is this better? All right. And I'd like to thank the mayor, deputy mayor, and city manager for coming out yesterday to welcome the congressman to tour the physic estate and see the projects that are involved in our congressionally directed spending ask. So I appreciate that. So as most of you know, for 54 years now, almost, Cape May MAC has been the cultural tourism leader, not just in Cape May City and not just in South Jersey, but as I was reminded of today in a conversation with the historical commission, really throughout the state of New Jersey. And we've known anecdotally that we matter and we're probably the main impetus that there is a 10 and a half month, if not a 12-month economy these days in Cape May, as opposed to some other shore towns that experience anywhere from eight to 12 weeks. But those suspicions were reinforced and reinforced through the economic impact study that we performed in concert with the county tourism department, as well as the Southern Shore Regional Destination Marketing Organization. They chipped in. They got some meaningful information that they're able to use. And we got some very, very important information that we're able to use for grant applications and things of that nature. So without further ado, I'd ask the city clerk, who's been great to work with and getting this on the agenda and before you. It's about a six-minute presentation, and then I can answer any questions you might have after that.
Cape May MAC champions the arts, culture, and history of Cape May County. Since its founding in 1970, Cape May MAC has helped transform Cape May from a summer-only beach resort to the country's leading Victorian-themed destination. Its mission includes activities that both directly and indirectly contribute to the success of the local economy. As a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, Cape May MAC is tasked with celebrating the history of Cape May and attracts many visitors to the destination while doing so. Cape May MAC operates major landmark structures in Cape May that are tourism drivers, including the 1879 Emlyn Physic Estate, the 1859 Cape May Lighthouse, and the 1942 World War II Lookout Tower. The organization also provides a variety of trolley, walking, and private home tours and hosts a plethora of special events and performances, including the Cape May Music Festival. Nearly 9,000 such public and private tours and events are presented by Cape May MAC annually. Cape May MAC also conducts educational outreach initiatives, and most are free for students as well as adult learners. Over 90% of Cape May MAC's now $4 million-plus income is earned through ticket sales, memberships, and donations. Only 8% is grant-funded for operations. Cape May MAC partnered with the Cape May County Department of Tourism and the Southern Regional Shore Destination Marketing Association to work with Oxford Tourism Economics to conduct an economic impact study. The findings reveal that Cape May MAC has an even more profound impact on the local economy than what was previously believed. Cape May MAC's annual operations, along with the spending of Cape May MAC visitors at local, off-site establishments and businesses, generate significant economic and fiscal impacts in the Cape May County economy. The study analyzed the impacts attributable to Cape May MAC from the past few years and contextualizes these impacts within an analysis of the overall Cape May County visitor economy. The total annual economic impact to Cape May generated by Cape May MAC amounts to as much as $196 million. Cape May MAC itself is responsible for over $4 million of that total, while Cape May MAC-generated visitors spend $137 million locally. The economic impact of $196 million infused into the local economy includes $26 million generated for state and local tax revenues annually. Cape May MAC welcomes between 250,000 to 300,000 patrons each year for physic house museum, walking, trolley, and private home tours, special events, visits to the popular Cape May Lighthouse and World War II Lookout Tower, and group tours. 80% of the annual visitors to Cape May MAC's tours and events originate from outside of Cape May County, 66% of which spent at least one overnight stay. And over 50% of Cape May MAC-generated visits were in the non-prime time shoulder season months. Of the $137 million spent in local businesses by Cape May MAC patrons, over $27 million is spent in September and October, and almost $23 million in November and December. Cape May County tourism statistics reveal that there has been as high as a 98% occupancy rate for the most recent December in Cape May accommodations. Between the holiday preview weekend, which occurs from the week before Thanksgiving, until New Year's Day, Cape May MAC offers almost 600 public tours, events, and things to do. In addition, Cape May MAC's group tour department brings bus groups to Cape May year-round with the highest concentration in the spring and fall months. Annually, bus groups from 20 to 25 states are brought to Cape May through Cape May MAC's group tour initiative. Cape May MAC's direct spending impacts were across a wide range of sectors within the local economy. Of the $142 million spent for non-MAC programming locally, $51 million was in accommodations. Consider this: For every $1 spent at a Cape May MAC tour or event, $51.40 is spent on lodging. Also, $34 million is spent on food and beverages, $28 million in retail purchases, $14 million in entertainment and recreation, and $10 million in transportation, all directly attributed to Cape May MAC's programming. Cape May MAC generates an annual employment impact of over 1,980 part-time and full-time jobs. Cape May MAC also generates an annual labor income of over $60 million to the Cape May County workforce. Cape May MAC visitors account for almost 2.5% of all Cape May County visitors and at least 2% of Cape May County visitor spending each year.
Cape May MAC makes it easy to offer history as part of our tourism marketing because they have such a wide range of tours, attractions, and events. Heritage tourism is on the rise as more of our visitors want to learn and experience the history and local culture of the destination.
Having a self-sustaining nonprofit like Cape May MAC is a special thing for Cape May. It would be impossible for the city to provide the array of cultural programming it does: special events, museums, trolley tours, private home and walking tours, a classical music festival, an educational initiative, several thousands of things for visitors and locals to do each year. It's not surprising that the results of the economic impact study are what they are. Those of us who know MAC understand and appreciate all that Cape May MAC does. One of our fabulous innkeepers in town once said, while presenting to other historic accommodation owners, "If you're in a town that does not have something like MAC, you should start one," and I couldn't agree more.
Thank you, Mayor. Well said. So again, this video is available on our webpage and YouTube, and now that we've presented to City Council, we'll be putting it out on social media. I think the most impactful number that was mentioned is that we produce somewhere between 8,500 and 9,000 different things on an annual basis, both of public and private tours and events. As I said, last year at Christmas time, when you folks were all there for the Christmas tree lighting, I asked the people in the Atlantic Brass Band, "How many events do you think that we have between Christmas and New Year's?" And they said 35. That was closer to almost 582. And when you count our combination tours, 630 some different things for people to do in that six weeks around the holidays. So, you know, it's a labor of love. It's a mission. And when you think that as a $4 million nonprofit, that at one time in recent years, used to have to borrow somewhere between $350,000 or $500,000 just to subsist in the winter to be able to get by and still continue doing that, I think it speaks volumes. But it's an honor and a privilege to be part of this organization. And as much as it is that, it is to be able to work with all of you on City Council and the administration because we know that you have our back and we sincerely appreciate it. Thank you. Available for any questions if you see...
No, just very impressive presentation and very impressive that the two firms that you worked with were able to provide that kind of downstream information. It's very hard to get to, so very well done.
Thank you. Thanks again, everybody.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Jody. Wonderful. Thank you.
Mayor, next we have ordinances for introduction.
And also, let me just, you know, I think it was just the other day, I know some of these holidays you hear about are a little out there. But I saw it was Lighthouse Day just the other day, and you obviously mentioned it in the video. But there was a time when the Cape May Lighthouse was really in very poor shape. And I know some places are, you know, lighthouses are kind of becoming a thing of the past. And MAC has been just such a steward of what is so symbolic of the city of Cape May and the Cape May Lighthouse, so.
We've invested $2.5 million in that over the years since 1986. And we have had over 2.5 million people, almost dollar-for-person climb the lighthouse. And we've invested over $3 million in your asset, the physic estate. And you know of our aggressive plans to put HVAC and fire suppression in the physic house and some of the other plans that we have. So it's an ongoing thing. It's constantly reinvesting.
It's just one of those things that you, when you lose a thing like that, you think, "How did that happen?" But we're not losing it because of MAC and then their donors and their staff and their volunteers. So we thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Ordinance for introduction?
Yes, we have 517-2023, an ordinance amending city code to include a prohibition on light pollution within the residential zones in the city of Cape May.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments, council? This is obviously first reading, new ordinance that we're looking at. If I could just kind of introduce it a little bit. I understand that the Environmental Commission and Councilman Yeager are looking at light pollution in general, looking at a bigger scale. Want to make sure we do what's right for the town, for our environment. In the meantime, we, I received a couple complaints, Mayor, in regard to light pollution and different neighbors and things like that. The city solicitor looked into our current codes, had some discussion with our code enforcement officers. And we felt like we really want to clear this up a little bit and have some concrete rules and regulations when it comes to light pollution within the city. And if you're okay with that.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is very well done. It's, the examples, I think, makes it clear for the public to understand. I thought the detail associated with the times and all of that, I think it makes it that much easier for someone who's reading this, trying to interpret it, because sometimes, you know, not always are these things clear. So I thought it was very well done, and I think that it certainly helps clarify what the intention is for going forward.
And I'd just also say to all of council, obviously, this is a working document. Anything anybody would like to see differently, be happy to hear. One thing, Mr. Solicitor, and I think this is addressed, but I just want to make sure. Obviously, HPC has say on exterior lighting, and I just wanted to make sure that that's reflected within this ordinance.
One of the things we can do on, we could send it to the HPC for their review and comment prior to any second reading or adoption.
And just make sure if there needs to be a statement in there, does not obviate any HPC design standards for lighting.
Oh, sure. Absolutely not. It's a, this is an overlay. And this is really less of a development ordinance and more geared towards health and safety and public welfare. Because with the onset of LED lights, it's just, sometimes there's more power associated with that, and they can go all night. And I don't think, if it's not your light, you may not realize the impact that it's having.
Older light bulbs are a little bit softer in tone.
Sure. And they, you know, they give you 60-watt equivalent or 40-watt equivalent. It's the type of things you see on the boxes now.
Exactly, yeah.
You just don't get a sense of how bright they are until you turn out the lights, and sure enough, it might be shining in your kitchen window. So I can just give an outline for the record so that we have an understanding of what this is... is proposing to do and not proposing to do. This is geared towards the residential areas, the residential zoning districts. So this would apply residential versus residential, and then this also applies to anybody that's outside of a residential district, that the impact of their light is felt within a residential district. So just to be clear about the parameters of it. And it sets minimum standards, you know, there's 3,500 Kelvin or less, which, you know, above that, you're getting into white light rather than warm, you know, warmer, softer light. And our city engineer actually provided a, you know, examples of shielded fixtures that should be used. One point I just want to bring up for discussion purposes is, and again, as Mayor indicated, this is a living document, but this is based on a lot of similar examples across the state that people have adopted, towns have adopted in response to the LED lighting, and a response to the type of complaints that the city's been receiving as of late. So one item, just for discussion, would be this Section 312-3A, installing or maintaining directional floodlights or other types of artificial lighting that, this is prohibited. Directional floodlights or other types of artificial lighting that provide a continuous concentrated beam of light extending beyond any property lines within or into any residential area. This prohibition shall not apply to spotlights or other types of artificial lighting controlled by a motion detector that automatically turns off within 10 minutes of activation caused by motion. I just want to bring that up for discussion because I don't think there's any intent here to allow spite lights. I think maybe some spotlights are appropriate, but not a spite light where you're just, in order to get around this, you know, "It's on a timer, but it shines onto my neighbor's property who I'm not getting along with," or just to use an absurd example of how that might be interpreted. So one additional qualifier is you could add that in all cases, whether motion detector or not, any type of exterior fixtures or spotlights are going to be angled and geared towards the, within your own property line. So if you need a spotlight for your driveway, it should only shine on your driveway and not, you know, be shining into your neighbor's yard.
And we can add shielded in that same clarification, just to make sure, you know, because we kind of give the examples of the shielded, you know, the spotlight fixtures can be shielded too, so that's, you know, it can still provide security around your building. You know, I think that's a lot of people why they put the spotlights or building mounted lights, you know, so you can get in and out of your house safely and know what's around, but they can still be shielded so that they don't go in the, especially into the houses of your neighbors, inside the windows.
And are you done, Chris? I'm sorry.
Yes, I just wanted to share that comment with you, and one way to potentially address that in that paragraph would be to add a sentence saying, "However, in all cases, spotlights shall be shielded and directed to within property lines." And that kind of narrows it down, the intent not to allow for something like that to happen.
Okay. I did want to just follow up. The mayor mentioned briefly, the Environmental Commission has actually been, they have, one of the members of the commission has been studying, you know, a dark sky initiative for some time because it is a significant environmental issue for all the reasons you just explained. And I mention it only because our next meeting will be next Wednesday, and of course, I'd just like to be able to bring feedback. If there's more changes they'd like to have added to this, I'll try to get them out as quickly as possible for discussion next time.
That's great, and I think certainly Council will want to hear those and would be happy to have an amendment to this for second reading, of course. Any other questions or comments, Council?
So just the one amendment, if Council's considering adopting this or introducing this on first reading, the amendment would be to add a line in 312-3A at the end of that paragraph to say, "However, in all cases, spotlights shall be equipped with shielding and directed to keep and with light to be kept within property lines."
You want to say that one more time?
Yeah. "However, in all cases, spotlights shall be equipped with shielding and with light to be kept within property lines." Does that work?
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Do you need a motion to accept that, Chris?
Yes.
I'll make the motion.
Motion to amend?
Motion to amend.
I'll second that.
Or motion to amend, to adopt, or introduce as amended.
Right. And with the instruction that I think we want to get some feedback from the Environmental Commission.
And HPC.
And HPC.
Yes.
This is an motion to amend and introduce as amended simultaneously?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullock?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor and Council, can I ask for your permission to change up our agenda a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely.
There's some questions that, about Cape Stock, and I asked the chief to address some of these questions.
Sure.
He's got a meeting at 4:00.
Understood.
Okay.
No problem.
I was wondering if that would be okay?
Let's do it now. That's no problem.
Okay.
Chief?
Thank you, Chief.
No, no worries. Earlier this afternoon, I did receive a call from Councilmember Meyer regarding Cape Stock, the upcoming event that's coming here in Cape May. His concern was from a citizen, a resident, that was worried about the coverage and rescue and police personnel being in the area. I ensured him that we would look into it, make sure that that was controlled. Lieutenant Walker, who's our events coordinator for the department, I met with him again. He reassured me that the event is fully staffed with our people that are going to be there. We have one officer, one full-time officer, one Class II that's going to be there at the event. Last year, we kind of vetted it last year. As we go through it, I tasked Lieutenant Walker to do is, you know, I used to run all the events, but, you know, things have changed, so each year, since he's been lieutenant and the events coordinator, he'll look at the event, he'll scale it, and then give it to me and say, "It worked this year this way, next year it might work different." So last year's notes were, "Add a police officer to the event, to the location, just for slip and falls, just for people being comfortable that they're at an event," because you go to a concert, there's events and people there, so we added two members of staff there. There's no alcohol at this event that we provide or that's being provided there, so we'll monitor that if there's any issues there with that. The other question was as far as rescue squad being available. They're on an on-call basis. If they need them, we're going to call them, but our staff that's there will be fully equipped to render first aid immediately in the interim between the time that rescues call if there's a need for rescue to be there. Speaking with Casey Radigan, same thing. She indicated that it wasn't a huge issue last year. It's a three-day event, you know, it's not Woodstock per se, it's Cape Stock, so we do things a little bit different here on the Cape. I'm hoping that there's no issues. I will be also in attendance all three nights. I pop my head into all the events that I can. On the weekends, if I'm not here, one of my command staff will be there, Captain Bevick, Lieutenant Walker, or Lieutenant Mazza to watch over the event, so I feel it'll be okay. It is a fenced-in area. You're going to have some beachgoers and onlookers from the beach that get a free concert, they don't have to pay, but they don't get upfront seating, so, did I answer that?
Chief, just could you, for the public, give the dates and the times of the event? Do you have that?
Jules, can I borrow your piece of paper?
Okay. I just so that everyone, clear sort of on what the...
A three-day piece of music, piece of music on the beach, August 18th, 19th, and 20th, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Okay. Starting at what time?
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's okay. 4:00 PM Friday, 2:00 PM Saturday, 2:00 PM Sunday, so be a very busy weekend down at our convention hall. So it's, like I said, last year was a very peaceful event. Hopefully this year will be the same peaceful event, but I do acknowledge the concerns of the resident from the contact that you shared on that, to make sure that we're covered there. If in fact there's a need for additional police officers, I will, obviously, I have the full permission of the manager to make that change if I need so.
What time is it scheduled to end?
At 10 o'clock. Doesn't give an end time on here.
Oh.
4:00 PM Friday, 2:00 PM start.
Oh, okay.
I don't have the full times of it will stop, so I could tell you this, by 10 o'clock, it has to stop because music.
Yeah.
Outside, music has to stop by 10 o'clock, so. Any other questions or do we have that?
I think that's good.
And it's, you know, it's a city of Cape May-sponsored event, but I know this will probably elicit other comments from this conversation, so we'll go from there.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Okay.
Thank you.
Is anyone wishing to speak on that topic here that would like, before the chief leaves? Go ahead, please. Mr. Roush?
Jules Roush, 1010 New York Avenue. It's really not relevant to what the chief has had to say, but with the bills that are being presented tonight for payment, along with the bill from the last month, the last meeting, we're up to $41,400 being paid in advance of this event. I don't recall where we've taken this amount of money being paid in advance for a particular event that was not approved by City Council with a budget, so it's really a question of, is this something unusual, or are we going to look at this in the future where an event is just going to kind of grow on its own?
So doesn't this run through the Recreation Tourism Budget? And my understanding is that many of these bands, because I think there's been, they're paid in advance, and then if there's an issue, you know, then it's resolved or remediated after, so the payment upfront would not be an unusual circumstance. My impression is it's a pretty standard operating procedure from that perspective. Did that answer one of your questions?
Yes.
Okay.
I am concerned, as I've indicated to the chief, that this could be a big event. We have no idea what a three-day event may do in the city with added population from the visitors that go to the beach. I mean, I have no idea what the ticket sales are. Mike, you may know?
This is, Jules, this is the second year for it.
Third.
Third year for it, so it really has not been an issue in the past as far as...
Well, this is the first three-day event, so...
We've had it in the past, last year as well.
I thought last year was a three-day event too. At least.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Stacy?
I guess when it comes to bill pay, I thought it was my understanding...
Excuse me, could you, please, I'm sorry for the record.
I'm sorry. Stacy Sheehan, 928 Columbia Avenue. Thank you. And I know we had pulled a bill before because it was my understanding that we do, as a municipality, we're not supposed to pay a bill until services are rendered, and that's why I was questioning the fact that we're paying a bill before services are rendered. And I know we pulled a bill before when we were going to pay for a concert and that they, before it was performed.
Well, I think, you know, Council would authorize the check to be paid. I think the idea is to have the payment ready for the event this weekend for the artists. So Council will be authorizing it, and then it will be managerial discretion whether they're issued. Like, if somebody doesn't show up, then there might be an issue.
Okay.
But at least...
Yeah, I think the process, yeah, they'd be prepared. They're not going to... Okay, because it's been the policy of Council, and I thought it was municipal rule from the state that you're not supposed to approve a bill until services are rendered. You can't put an invoice in to be paid until those services are completed, and right here, you're putting in for a service that hasn't been completed yet, and I didn't understand why they couldn't wait till the next meeting to approve a bill after the services are rendered.
The answer is they could, but I think that they, the plan was to put it on this meeting so that checks could be issued for the weekend, and if there is some issue, Council could rescind authorization, or management could decide not to issue the checks if there was some issue with the contractor. But this just is a timing thing because Council meets twice a month, so...
I just, I didn't know, we don't approve other bills ahead of time for services, and that was my thing, that we are now doing this.
Council, to clarify, they collect the check after the performance. They're not provided it beforehand.
I think it makes all the sense in the world to approve this now so that we can cut a check when somebody's done their job and...
Yeah, I'm sure they want to get paid.
Right.
And if they don't show up, they don't get the check.
They don't get the check.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. We'll close public comment on that, which we're out of order here, but that's fine, and move into ordinances.
Yes, we have ordinances for second reading and consideration for adoption. First is 507-2023, an ordinance amending the zoning code to include minimum requirements for landscape buffers to surround private and semi-private swimming pools.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments, Council?
There is a public hearing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 507? This is ordinance on minimum requirements for landscape buffers to surround private and semi-private swimming pools. Anyone wishing to speak on this? Seeing none, we can close public comment. Any questions or comments, Council? No? Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullock?
Yes.
Next, we have 514-2023, an ordinance amending the zoning code regarding maximum height of accessory uses and to include pitched roofs, and there's a public hearing, Mayor.
Wish to open this up for public comment? Anyone wishing to speak on 514? Seeing none, we can close. Pardon me, I'm sorry.
Laurel Nashby, 924 Washington. When I reviewed this synopsis of the ordinance, there was a, there was some wording that had to do with accessory buildings not being able to be used as rentals, and I was just wondering if you guys have considered the fact that there are so many garages in town that have apartments in them, so there's certainly precedent, but it might be to the city's benefit if we actually did allow year-round rentals in accessory buildings and strictly year-round rentals, because then you would potentially help mitigate workforce housing limitations and also increase our declining year-round population. So I was just throwing it out there.
I think it's a really good question. Mr. Solicitor, I don't think that this would preclude us from doing that at a later time.
No, that, you know, could be a workable concept. This specifically, we have a current code for other outbuildings, and there's already a height limitation of 10 feet on those. So these are already, the language about no outbuildings will be used for human habitation or living accommodation. I saw as more of a clarification of intent rather than really changing anything.
Mm-hmm.
The real change here is the pitch of the roof to hopefully make a more...
Aesthetic.
Aesthetic outbuilding.
Yeah.
But the language down here was basically belt and suspenders language to say, "Oh, by the way, you know, we don't, these aren't the type of buildings with this height limitation and these dimensions and these limitations. We don't want them used as accessory apartments." But we'll say this, we do have an accessory apartment program pursuant to our affordable housing settlement, so there are opportunities for people that are interested in that to pursue that, you know, through the proper channels if they have an idea for whether it's, you know, a deed-restricted unit that's not going to be listed on Airbnb or VRBO.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I'm sure the city would love to hear a proposal like that, depending, assuming the other factors are...
I was going to say, there's other requirements as far as the size and the accommodations and things like that.
Yeah, that's a generalization, but there are other areas where that type of concept may be workable under the right circumstances. But I don't think this precludes that, because this is just dealing with outbuildings, not necessarily, you know, accessory living space or garage apartment or something like that. This is talking about like a poolhouse.
The affordable housing, though, that you're speaking of, the city has funds and there are, there's a process if you wanted to go and, you know, restore, you know, make it living space, and there's a process for all of that as well, so.
Yes.
But it's a deed-restricted process.
Right.
As far as the funding to help do that.
Mm-hmm.
So just for clarification.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments or questions, Council? Roll call?
We are in need of a motion and a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullock?
Yes.
516-2023, an ordinance amending Section 7-13 regarding prohibited parking on a portion of Elmira Street with a public hearing.
Is anyone wishing to speak on the 516 this evening?
Stacy Shan, 928 Columbia Avenue. My question is, this is going from the Little Bridge, going from West Cape May to the stop sign, is that correct? How many parking spots are we losing? Because there is parking spots there.
This is, this is the location of the triangle where parking is currently prohibited. It's not on our books that says it's prohibited.
Now, but if you, I just asked, if it goes from the bridge to that new stop sign?
It doesn't go that far.
That was my question.
No, it's that, it goes from the bridge, you'll see a painted triangle all the way to the next, to the first parking spot. Goes from that first parking spot all the way to the bridge, that section, we're clarifying.
Where it's currently no parking, as it is with, okay. Because if you go down there, there is parking between the stop sign and the, thank you.
No, no, we definitely want to keep that. Okay?
It would add more if we could.
Right. Any, any other comment on this one? Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Questions or comments, council? Roll call?
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullock?
Yes.
Next, we have the public portion on the resolutions only. If anybody's wishing to comment on the resolutions listed, please come to the podium and state your name and address.
Dennis?
Dennis Crowley, 806 Lafayette Street. Resolution 202-08-2023, is that going to be on the agenda tonight?
It is.
And that was a subject of a executive session?
It was.
Contents of which, two points I'd like to raise to you. Number one is that affordable housing in this city has been neglected to a certain degree in terms of its, in terms of its use and availability throughout the city. There are places where affordable housing is available, but this is the first example, this property, I believe, is the first example of a swap piece, where a builder was able, under our law, to swap a location in some other part of the town for his affordable housing requirements. My concern is twofold. Number one, this provides a certain degree of standards under which those kinds of swaps take place. However, I believe it probably should not be in a resolution. I think it should probably be in an ordinance, because the city can't begin to piecemeal the kind of requirements for affordable housing that not only the state requires, but that we would like to have as a community, because the city has the right and the obligation to make sure that affordable housing is both available and consistent with the town we live in. So I think that, number one, probably the council might want to consider convening a group to craft an ordinance which covers all of the requirements and the obligations and the desires of the city with respect to this kind of a placement, rather than put it in a resolution, because resolutions come and go.
Could you repeat that, Dennis? It considers what? If we were to put a group together, they would consider what?
The crafting of an ordinance for the city to define and explain what the city's requirements are for affordable housing, because in our ordinances, we do incorporate the skeleton of the state statutes. But we don't have an ordinance that speaks to what Cape May would like to do to provide affordable housing, both as it's consistent with the city and it's what it ought to be for the people who use it. So I think an ordinance stands as law for the city. A resolution can be changed at any time, and it doesn't provide the consistency and comprehensiveness of an ordinance. So I think, I think maybe the city ought to consider crafting that kind of an ordinance, but the group of people, maybe the planning board, maybe others, to make sure that we've covered all the bases, rather than start making standards piecemeal one at a time through resolutions. That's number one.
Are you talking about the standards associated with the actual physical building?
Buildings, the physical buildings.
Right, okay. So I'm going to let Chris address that, because we, that's part of, I think, you know, some of the discussions that were had.
Okay, good. And the other point, before Chris explains, the other point I wanted to make to you was that I would assume there's a material change in the authority of this resolution. I don't think it ought to be moved today under any circumstances, because the people who are concerned with this particular resolution need a chance to read it and find out what it is, and need a chance to react to it.
We don't, we don't have any changes to the, to the resolution, just to answer your question.
There are no changes to the resolution as is?
No.
Well, okay, I thought there were going to be.
There isn't. And we'll get to it, and I think there's going to be an explanation, but why don't we have...
What don't you like about the resolution?
I don't dislike anything about the resolution. What I don't like is that it went into an executive session. I was concerned that as it's coming out, there are going to be changes to it.
And if we changed it, Mr. Crowley, I would totally agree with you.
Oh.
The neighbors would, should be able to review those changes before a vote.
So I'm hearing for the first time that it went executive session, but no changes coming back as is?
It's coming back as is.
Right, and what with, there's some things I can discuss and some things I can't, but the intent here is to provide an explanation. If council does adopt this, you're going to hear a reason why. I'm prepared to explain that now.
Okay.
But I wanted to ask you a question.
Sure.
What, and this was follow-up to the mayor's question, what, and this is not a rhetorical question, what is missing from the code that you, you're looking for?
Well, there could be community standards for the kind of properties that are available, the kind of maintenance on those properties.
So to ask it another way, are you saying, okay, if you're not going to put it in this subdivision anymore, and you want to locate it off-site?
Right.
What does that mean? And what does that mean to the applicant? And what does it mean to the neighbors of that?
Exactly.
Right, okay. So, and those are very real concerns and things that council has considered. I will say that I think that there's a lot already out there on this. I think that the affordable housing code itself wants an off-site opportunity to satisfy the obligation. And the reason for that, I said, I think I said this last meeting, but I'll say it again, is because Cape May is not lower township, is not middle township. We don't have the land that those towns have to have subdivisions with affordable housing units in it, so that if we do have development, we want to provide flexible opportunities. And that was something that the Fairshire Housing Center, our opposing party in that litigation, wanted in our code as part of the settlement. So that was something that was advanced by the advocates of affordable housing to provide these off-site opportunities.
Right.
But what does that mean in a particular case? In this case, that meant a discussion with the planning board, because there was consideration of a subdivision approval. To the extent this is approved...
But there was also, to interrupt, there was also a conversation between you and the owner of this property as well.
They're, right. I reached out to the applicant's attorney to see their, you know, plan for the property, because I looked at the planning board decision, and I didn't see a maintenance guarantee in there. But as this applicant knows, as that attorney knows, as anybody in this room knows, that doesn't mean we don't have standards, okay? We have property maintenance standards, there's a Landlord Registration Act, there's habitability requirements that landlords are presumed under law. So we don't have to pass a bunch of things for those things to be in effect on people. There's other, there's a web of regulations that apply to a property.
And I think it would be helpful going forward if there, if that web of responsibilities gets a rope tied through it to pull together in a single document that looks, that is the city's policy on these kinds of off-site affordable housing situations.
Well...
Because we take, we take very good care of our affordable housing plans on Broad Street and the other ones. That's, the city takes care of them. We kind of want to make sure that wherever this affordable housing comes to Cape May, it is treated in the same careful way.
Right, but I want to be clear on what council's role tonight is, this swap already happened, because it was in the context of a land use application. So council approving a deed restriction is in furtherance of the goal of providing affordable housing opportunities. We can, there's certainly some debate about how we got here, and should it have been there? And did, wasn't it?
That's...
I get all that.
That's in the past.
Yeah, it is in the past, but it's, I understand the arguments, and they're all policy arguments, it's all good, and there's reasonable disagreement on that. But what we're not at anymore is, we're not really relitigating the planning boards to say...
No, no.
What we're doing is recognizing we are where we are, and we want affordable housing units, but I don't think it's council's position that there isn't room for improvement of what this is, could mean for the future, and I think they're actively looking at that.
Yeah, and my only point really is that as you look at it, there are ground rules that are going to be set for the process, and I would, I think it's better, just technically, to set them in ordinance rather than a resolution.
So, Mr. Crowley, oh, I'm sorry, we did have a discussion along those lines in the session, and I think that we, and I won't speak for the rest, but I certainly agree, but it doesn't obviate our ability to pass this deed restriction and this resolution associated with what the planning board already agreed to. But I do think that we've talked about, you know, knowing that if this is the first of perhaps others, what should we be looking at and making sure that, you know, maybe coupling them together into something that defines it? If there are these types of, you know, rule, new arrangements, what would it look like in the city?
Well, that's what I'm concerned with as well, so thank you.
Yeah. Just one additional to further the discussion, because I know that we talked about having it as part of the planning board, maintenance guarantee as part of the resolution. What Dennis is talking about is actually intriguing, because, you know, it would blanket and cover all COA affordable housing as far as maintenance is concerned. Is that something that, would you recommend us doing that, or?
Or do we make it just part of any non, something that's not within the housing authority umbrella and these units that we, you know, would be considering for off-site?
I think, I think one option that may address some of this or most of this is the concept, and this is already built into our code, that affordable housing units, to the extent they're in that development, appear, you know, have a like appearance. And that goes for landscaping, goes with design, so that they don't stick out like a sore thumb, like this, these got short shrift, and the rest of the development's fine. So one of the, if you recognize that that would be a requirement in the development, recognizing that off-site it should also fit in and be compatible with the neighborhood that they're proposed to be located, the idea that there might be some maintenance obligation or maintenance guarantee associated with that for on-tracked improvements. But that's something I would leave to the board on a particular application, because we don't know what will be needed. It may be the most beautiful unit in the world, or it may need some work, and in which case I would want the board, it could be codified in some way, but then left to the board's, you know, or...
Interpretation.
Yeah. Because you can make a maintenance guarantee, a condition of a zoning permit, too. That's in the municipal land use law. So there's some options to deal with it, and I think, I don't think there's any disagreement about...
Not at all.
...for the future.
Not at all.
I don't think, I just don't think it, I don't think it, it's not, this isn't an opportunity to relitigate the planning board.
They don't want to do that. I only want to raise the issue that we need to get in the game of affordable housing. We need rules to play that game, and everybody needs to know what they are.
And set expectations for everybody, I think is...
Exactly.
Well, if at the planning board, of which you are a member, Mr. Crowley, then if there's an application that comes up that's asking for this consideration, I think that's the time, knowing where that location might be, what the unique circumstances might be, that there would be something within that approval that would set those standards. So then when it comes to council, we're aware of what the planning board evaluated, looked at, and decided on.
Okay, that's good. Want to raise the issue?
And with that agreement, it sounds like to me, I'd ask that the solicitor speak to the solicitor of the planning board to see that that happens in the future in regards to a maintenance plan, et cetera. I mean, is that what we're kind of saying?
Conditions of the property, right.
Yeah, we'll get direction from council on the planning board to pretty much make sure we've covered this in the future.
Okay, that's great. I just want to also say that I'm impressed by Chris's acumen by being able to jump from plumbing to affordable housing without scaling the damn...
What did you mean? But you, I thought you said plumbing. Thanks.
Anyone else speaking on the resolutions this evening?
Stacy Shan, 928 Columbia Avenue. I also have a question about that 202 deed restriction. I guess my concern is that this agreement is not with the company that is building the houses, that it's a new LLC created. And I don't know how we can, you can do a deed restriction with creating a new LLC and not keeping the one that built the houses. To me, what happens if this LLC goes out of business, because it's not tied to his business at all?
So we need the company, the entity that owns that property to sign this deed. A deed signed by a non-owner of the property is no good for the city of Cape May. So this developers put the property in an LLC. This problem could present itself in this context, or it could present itself throughout town. But ultimately, what's going to have to happen is, once these units are put on the market for rental, they're going to have, the people are going to have to qualify, there's going to have to be compliance with the Landlord Registration Act, and we need a human to be identified as the registered agent and responsible party in the case of emergencies and the point of contact. We can't have ABC LLC as the point of contact, it's got to be a human.
So right now, it is the LLC, though?
That's who's got to sign the deed. It's going to have to be signed, executed by, what I'm saying to you is, there has to be a responsible party associated with this property ultimately when it's put up for rental. But we can't prevent people from putting properties in LLCs.
Well, yeah, but I would think that if you're doing a deed restriction that's associated with the COA housing for this development, that at least that the builder that owns the development that he's doing should also own the property that he's given for COA housing.
Well, that, that, to the extent that's a condition, it didn't show up in any resolution or anything like that. This is, this is, this is what's been being presented. We have a property owner, a developer, he's got a development over here, he's got an LLC over here, he wants to put the, this property in its own LLC, which frankly, if I was on the other side of this, that makes a lot of sense to me. You want to separate your properties. But it doesn't mean that you just absolve yourself of all responsibility. There's going to be a human that's going to be receiving calls and notifications and things like that.
My concern is if this LLC, if he closes it up and decides he doesn't want to, is there any repercussions to that with the house?
It's, once this deed restriction's recorded, it's secured in place for 30 years, so these affordable requirements are going to be in place. So if it goes to foreclosure, whoever gets it's going to be subject to these requirements.
Okay.
So these, that's why I say...
That's why this deed restriction.
In furtherance of our trying to preserve affordable housing, we, we're proposing this deed restriction so that that protection's put in place. That's a good protection for the city, actually. And then all these other questions about, you know, maintenance, how it's going to look, what happens if somebody falls off the face of the earth, are real questions, but they can be dealt with by other mechanisms and other statutes and codes that are in place, was my sense.
Okay, thank you. My other question, it has to do with Resolution 220, authorizing the encroachment agreement. Has that been HPC-approved, that wall? Because it, I don't know if anybody's driven past it and seen the stone, it doesn't look like the stone would be approved. It's in the historic district.
They're matching the retaining wall that they currently have.
No, it doesn't match the retaining wall that it currently has.
I mean, that's, I mean, they'll have to go through the zoning process. This is just through the authorization to construct that retaining wall there. They'll still have to go through the approval process.
Okay, because it looks like they started to construct it and it stopped.
And that's where we stopped them.
Right. And the wall that they're putting up does not even look at all similar to what's there, what was there now. And that's why I was asking about...
They'll go through the approval process.
So it still has to go through HPC?
This is not a substitute for HPC approval. It actually says that in the agreement.
Okay, just making sure, because when you went by it, it was like, this doesn't even look close. And then my second question has to do with 221 and the new purchasing agent. Will that person be approving day-to-day purchases with that? How's that working since we're outsourcing this, this position?
There's a contract, sorry, there's a contract that was shared, and I believe that Kevin Vettet, this individual who works with a number of municipalities.
Yes, Kevin called some larger municipalities, municipalities our size up north and around the state, and said it's, they do outstanding work, and they give all thumbs up on the organization, so it's going to save us a whole lot of money, and we're going to be able to continue to keep the process going.
Okay, I guess my question still didn't get answered.
Okay, I guess my question still didn't get answered. Will they be approving the day-to-day purchases like the current purchasing agent does? That they have to go?
Accounts receivable, accounts payable, I think, will still be running through the finance office, was the indication I got from this contractor. What they're going to be available for, and this is sort of the trade-off, right? Because it's a lower cost, it's a, it's a professional services contract rather than a hired employee. So, the trade-off is you're not going to have that day-to-day person here walk into the office and say, hey, can you help me with this or that, or can we do the accounts payable? It's going to be more in terms of running and coordinating the procurement. So, if one council member or the management indicates that we need an RFP for something, they'll be able to contact this person, they'll be able to turn it around rather quickly. And they have a good number of resources, because they have a lot of contracts with other towns, so they see a lot and have a lot of resources. But yeah, the trade-off is, you're not, you're going to lose the day-to-day, you know, task person that's going to be physically in the office, but they'll be remotely available and will be able to coordinate and be on-call essentially, you know, for that service. So, that's, that's the nature of the relationship.
Okay.
I'm going to continue to follow up on what you're asking, Stacy, as well, because I did have concerns with this one. I contacted Kevin, and he said he wanted to try, do this as a trial basis. That's the reason that this resolution is written until December 31st, and then it can be renewed at that point.
Right, because I mean, our purchasing agent now, they will come in and will say, we're going to do this, and they, you know, gets approval for the department and think, there's a lot that they do besides just order materials.
Yeah, and that was my one, that was my question that I had for him as well, you know, is that going to leave your, your department a little short? That's something that, you know, he'll have to address with management.
So, let's pull that one from the authorization, and Kevin can be here, he's here, so he'll come down.
Okay, so he can come down.
Yeah.
He is available, I can ask him to visit.
We'll pull that resolution and ask him.
He did say that the daily purchase requisition approval is included in the contract.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I, he gave a very detailed, included in here is a very detailed listing of all of the functions.
Kevin's here now to give an explanation.
Okay, can answer the questions.
Kevin's been monitoring, while he's keeping busy at his office, and he said he'd stop down if something popped up.
Yes, 221.
Just to address your question, Stacy, part of the contract includes daily purchase requisition approval, so he will have access to our admin's accounting software to look at requisitions that the department sends in, and he can approve them, and then our office will just do the printing and the, the day-to-day typical stuff like that.
Right, and because I know council always likes to do local, use the local vendors for a lot of things, I didn't know how, is that going to affect how the purchasing goes also?
It shouldn't be a major impact, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And this is a limited contract, so that you can get a feel for how the process works?
Yeah, right now, the contract is on a month-to-month basis, he just needs 30 days' notice, so he agrees it's kind of like a test run.
I think it's, yes, it's a nice opportunity until we would potentially find someone permanently, if need be.
Any other public comment on resolutions only this evening? Seeing none, we can close public comment.
Thanks, Kevin.
Okay, council. Anything to remove from the consent agenda this evening? I know there are some sets of minutes that individual council members may have to abstain from if you'd like to.
Yeah, as, as Kevin ran there, did anyone have any other questions on that resolution? Just, should I ask him to come back down or no?
No.
Okay, okay, okay. I'm sorry.
That's okay, I believe there are some minutes that we have some abstentions from if you'd like to state that.
Yes, so if I could, it's, I have to, I'll be abstaining from the council regular meeting minutes of May 16th. That's the only exclusion I have.
Got it.
And I'll be doing the same for June 7th.
June 7th, mhm. All right, any other items to remove from the consent agenda, council?
Can I pull 218-08-2023?
Mhm.
And 222-08-2023?
I'd like to just make a comment if I can. We were going to pull 202 off the agenda, but we discussed everything we wanted to, we had to, so we don't have to do that.
Agreed, thank you. Okay.
Just those two, 218 and 222? All right, on the consent agenda this evening, we have the Cape May City Council regular meeting minutes dated April 18th, special meeting minutes dated May 2nd, closed session meeting minutes dated May 2nd, work session meeting minutes dated May 2nd, regular meeting minutes dated May 16th, and work session meeting minutes dated June 7th. The police incident report for the month of July 2023, fire incident report for the month of July 2023, tax and utility collections report for the month of June 2023. We have Resolution 202-08-2023, resolution authorizing execution of deed restriction between 1134 Lafayette LLC and the city of Cape May for affordable housing property known as 1134 Lafayette Street, Block 1113 Lot 8. 213-08-2023, resolution authorizing an application to the USDA Water and Waste Disposal Predevelopment Planning Grant Program to study sections of the sanitary sewer system to evaluate them for repair and appointing authorized representatives for matters involving documentation for the same. 214-08-2023, resolution regarding city of Cape May citywide biannual sidewalk sale. 215-08-2023, resolution authorizing professional services agreement for structural design, engineering, and construction administration of the AME Church Bell Tower. 216-08-2023, resolution authorizing change order number one to professional services agreement between the city of Cape May and Stephen Smolin of Architectural Heritage Consultants LLC for update and dissemination of HPC design standards. 217-08-2023, resolution authorize request for proposals for coastal engineer for the city of Cape May. 219-08-2023, resolution of support from local governing body authorizing the submittal of an application for the vehicle electrification incentive program funded by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. 220-08-2023, resolution authorizing an encroachment agreement. 221-08-2023, resolution appointing Sean P. Canning as a qualified purchasing agent to exercise the duties of purchasing agent pursuant to NJSA 40A 11-9 in the city of Cape May. And that is it for the consent agenda, council.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullock?
Yes.
So, we have 218-08-2023, resolution authorizing amendment to the contract for technology management services to Barbara Consulting Services LLC.
Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second, okay. Just a quick clarification on this, are we, are we adding this additional amount to this, so we're going to have to, we're need to first off revise the amount? Am I correct with that, Paul?
That's what it sounded like, right?
Yeah, we would have to amend that to increase it by $6,360.
Okay, but then, looking at the attachment that we received, it said a price not to exceed $13,500 with the approximately 66 hours. Can we add that to the resolution as an amendment as well? I'd rather it not exceed that price than have it written as a, as a finite amount.
Can you, can you say, state that again? I apologize.
So, in the memo that we received accompanying this resolution, it said WB Consulting anticipates approximately 66 hours of work, which would not, would be a not-to-exceed amount of $13,500. So, I would, I don't want to put a lump sum figure in here under the fourth whereas at the end of it. It says Barbara has proposed an increase in the lump sum figure to $13,500, with this adjusted amount being inclusive of the original lump sum figure. So, I would rather have a not-to-exceed in there, because that's what their contract states.
So, how about $18,000?
Not-to-exceed, yeah, add the two.
Two together, because it's both, Paul, right?
That's correct, yes.
That would be $18,860, right?
Just to be clear on what the contractor proposed to the city, and that's why I went back and put that in this resolution. There, they did propose a $8,500 lump sum figure, which included various services. Then, there's also additional, that's what it says in the middle of the third whereas, in addition to the above, the following services are proposed to be billed outside of the lump sum figure as needed. So, this is, this is what the contractor is proposing, and that, those additional services are, so one weekly visit is included in the lump sum figure. And then, phone support, remote support from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM Monday through Friday will be.
One and a half hour travel fee, so.
Yeah, all that other extra stuff.
So, it's not to, not to exceed would actually.
That's why I wanted to point that out to council, this is what, this is what the contractor's proposing, is 8,500 to include certain fee services, then there's this.
Add-on billing.
Add-on billing.
Then there's, then there's this, and then there's this.
But then they estimated their hours to complete these additional tasks, which is in Mr. Dietrich's memo, to try and get a figure out of the contractor, to say, look, this is, what are we in for? You know, and that's, that's, and so that's where the 13.
Five came.
Five, not-to-exceed amount, but that's inclusive of the 8,500. So, we're really talking about 13, a not, not-to-exceed figure of 13.
Of the 13.5, and then the additional 63.60.
63.60.
Right, so I just wanted to be clear that it's not 8,500 plus 13.50 plus six, it's 13.50 plus.
63.60.
63.60.
But still on call, but still on call based on need, the original.
Right.
Okay.
So, just to be clear, then, that 13,500 should read 18,860, is that right?
No, that, that is. Not-to-exceed.
Keep, keep the 13.5?
Isn't that what you?
Yeah, I would say, I would say, let's build, build this 63.60 into the.
Additional.
13.50 figure.
Right.
That's 18.
18,860.
So, 18,860.
And the rest of the language stays the same, Chris? Correct.
Right, and we'll just incorporate this proposal.
13.5 plus 63.60. 13.5.
18,860 bucks, right? Those are two numbers together.
Yep. Actually, it's 19.
19, 360.
19, 860.
19, 19. Yes, it's 19,860.
Nine and six.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Well, I'm trying to, I'm trying to negotiate down.
Appreciate that, for the purposes of this resolution. I think the figure is $19,860.
Okay, finally did math. I'm not the CFO, but.
So, we all understand that the amendment to this then would be, I'll hesitate to say it again, but striking the $13,500 and inserting $19,860. Correct?
Correct, I agree.
Do I have a motion to amend?
I'll make the motion to amend.
And I'll second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullock?
Yes, do I have a motion on the amended resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullock?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have Resolution 222-08-2023, resolution for the payment of bills.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Questions or comments?
I have a question, and the only reason I do, because there was some correspondence, Mr. Vol, maybe you can shed some light on it. The Sinorama, this same one was on our previous bill list at our last meeting, and then there was correspondence, and I'm not quite sure where that.
The Sinorama check went to the Cape May Courthouse location, and it's the wrong location. We found out that they, through the jitney people, they got it from Sinorama in Atlantic County. So, we stopped that check and reissued a check now to the proper Sinorama.
Okay, so, so the other check was stopped?
Yes.
I just want to make sure that we're not sending two checks to them.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullock?
Yes.
And finally, 223-08-2023, resolution approving a memorandum of agreement between the city of Cape May and the government worker unions, workers union, middle management unit, and authorize.
Pardon me, sorry.
And authorizing the execution of a new collective bargaining agreement between the parties covering the period of January 1st, 2022, through to December 31st, 2024.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments, council? Roll call.
Councilmember Jaeger?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember McDade?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullock?
Yes.
Any old business, council?
Any old business, council? No? New business, city solicitor?
Nothing tonight, mayor, thank you.
City manager?
The city engineer would like to talk about historic preservation.
Yeah, I, thank you. I forgot to mention earlier, I distributed a copy hot off the presses of the new historic design standards. Obviously, they've been on the website for a couple of weeks now, but, you know, we've gotten copies in here, so distributed in the, you know, manager's office, clerk's office. Obviously, the HPC office has one, and I just wanted, you know, they'll be distributed to all the HPC members at the, at their next meeting, but I wanted council to make sure that they got a copy of the new standards.
Do we have an intention to send these out, at least to some of the B&amp;B owners, or at least make them aware?
Part, part of the outreach process that we have, besides the four, I'll say, informational sessions that we're still working on, some of the dates, there are some pamphlets.
Okay.
That, that will be distributed, you know, we'll have different pamphlets here, but then also pamphlets to distribute at the different locations, like bed and breakfasts, the hardware stores, and different places like that, so.
Oh, good.
We'll have that out, and as soon as I have a, I'll say, final copy of all the different pamphlets, I'll make sure council gets a copy of each one of the pamphlets, so that they see what other outreach information.
Yeah, I mean, the chamber has a lot of the contact people, you know, some of us do, too, so, but just be nice to make sure that we're getting that information.
This was just the first shipment of the outreach stuff.
Yeah, it's great, looks beautiful.
And the one thing I want to mention, the online version for everybody's information has a lot of links that will direct you to the Department of the Interior Standards, a lot of other, you know, really kind of user-friendly.
Is that on the city's website now?
It's on the city's website.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's absolutely beautiful. I'd just make one suggestion, maybe giving two of these to the local library in case anybody wants to look at on their own time.
Nice.
It's a good idea.
Definitely.
Mayor, one last thing I want to bring up, I forgot, is there's confusion at the end of Lafayette, a liquor store with the stop signs. Paul and I are going to meet with Bob Church to try to realign that. I was telling the mayor earlier today, when I was down that area, and I stopped, and I was going to make a left, waiting for an opening from the others, and it's, there's And it's, there's conflict. So, we're trying to get that resolved. I just want to bring it up for the public in case anybody else has incurred this type of situation.
Can I go back to Councilman Myers? Maybe put one down in the construction and zoning office also?
Yeah, don't.
Yeah, I think that way it's right there, and they could, you know, when they come in to drop off applications, it'd be probably very good.
Yeah, I think it's going to be an enjoyable read for anybody that looks at it.
It is, it's beautiful. The illustrations and photographs are just great.
Steve did a wonderful job.
City clerk, any announcements?
Just want to remind everybody that the meetings are going back to five PM, I believe, at the next meeting, unless under otherwise indicated. But we're all done with the three PMs.
Don't speak too soon.
I know. You let me know if that changes. That's it tonight, mayor.
Okay, city council members, deputy, deputy mayor?
I, I do have something to bring up, and I guess I would be remiss if I didn't bring this up, especially at this time. I appreciate everything that Mike Vol has done in his time here in the city, but the city manager's position was going to be for two years, and then we were extending it for an additional year. The council then provided the contract, which was, it's going to be up in December. So, I think we now immediately need to do something as a council, because we're going to need to have time on our side for the, not only the citizens of Cape May, but also for the employees that work here. We currently, at the end of August, we're now, at the end of August, we have four months to advertise, to interview, to vet somebody for the position, and then that person to provide notice to their current employer. And I want to remind us all that we had three months before we were able to hire a CFO. It took, took quite a bit of time, and now we only have four months. I think it's the most important position in the city, and again, I do thank you, Mike. I think, you know, what you've done here has been wonderful. But we also need to do our job. We need to put the city in the forefront of all of this. So, my proposal is that we advertise immediately for the position, and we start the process so we have enough time to find the best qualified person for the city of Cape May.
Okay, and I think, I think that's definitely the plan. We want, we certainly want to advertise this soon and, and get as many applicants as we possibly can, do a very open and transparent process. So, I think maybe by next council meeting, we'll have some plan put together for that.
I would just like to say that, Mike, thank you. I'm sure that you would have preferred that you, you know, could have made some internal announcement on your own. I'm not sure if you did, but thank you for your graciousness, for what you've done, your service to this city, and the service to this, this county. So, I greatly appreciate it, and we're going to do everything we can to support you during this transition. Personally, I will do whatever I can to support you, and we'll make sure that all of the hard work that you've done is carried on.
Absolutely. Okay, any, who we have? Councilman Meyer?
Yeah, I just wanted to see if there's an update on the fence for the parking area at the.
I think it's up.
It's installed.
It's up.
It's up?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
It's up.
I gotta go check this thing out.
It does, it looks good.
Oh, thank you.
It has a sign that says, "Hiya, Shane."
Great, thank you, folks.
Councilmember McDade?
Nothing, mayor, thank you.
Councilman Yeager?
Nothing tonight, thank you, mayor.
I just want to congratulate everyone who was involved in National Night Out, especially, obviously, our police chief. I think we might need a bigger boat for that, too, because that's just, it's just hard to do, because it's pretty big. But there were so many people there, and all the kids were having such a wonderful time. It's such a nice community outreach event, and it's, you and your staff have done such a wonderful job with that event. It was very, very good. I want to thank our lifeguards this full season have done a wonderful job. In fact, I think we're going to have, in our next meeting, a, a accommodation for someone that actually rescued someone just this week. They had a heart attack on the beach and were revived. And we'll, we'll have the full details on that, but it really was, probably saved somebody's life. So, it's really our congratulations. I know they also worked the blessing of the waters today. We pushed the lifeguard boat out carrying the wreath, and there were some waves today, so they did a pretty good job. It was very, very good. And then, this is a note just from Kevin with some numbers. Occupancy tax is up three percent. That's about a month behind, if not a little bit longer, but it's, occupancy tax is at one-point-two million, which is three percent up, which is incredible, frankly, considering last year was a record season for the community. Beach tags are at one-point-nine million, which is one percent down, a little, a little bit down, but close. And we've been told that they, they plan on moving that to get at least even with last year. And parking is at three-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars, which is a five percent increase over last year. So, good, very good numbers so far for the season, especially in regards to how, how strong last year was. With that, we'll open it up to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please come to the microphone.
Dennis Crowley, eight oh six Lafayette Street. We, as a community, spend quite a bit of money on public safety. And a couple of weeks ago, I had the unfortunate experience of having a, what I consider a major accident involving kids on bicycles, cars, and a helicopter in front of my house on Lafayette Street. And so, I was able to witness the entire scene from start to finish. And I have to tell you, the money we spend on public safety is well worth it, because the degree of competence and professionalism and efficiency that was exhibited by our entire police force who was there, including the chief, our fire department, our rescue services, county rescue services, it was, it was almost like a dance, a ballet of competence. And the situation was handled immensely impressive. I was immensely impressed by the way the situation was handled, and I, and I think most of the time, people come and complain to the council about stuff. But this is something you need to pass on to all of those folks, that they're doing their jobs properly and well, and we, we appreciate them very much. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Dennis. I think we all echo those sentiments. That was a very tough situation, but dealt with very professionally. Stacy?
Stacy Chan, nine-twenty-eight Columbia Avenue. I have a question with the arches. Has there been anything advancements with the arches? No? And will council vote on this project before the project moves forward?
Yes.
Okay. And where on this website are the exact locations of the new arches?
It's not, because it hasn't been total.
Oh, I was told the last meeting that the, where the arches are going to be located was on the website. That's why, that's the only reason why I'm asking that question.
They only gave, they gave potential phases, but they haven't given.
Okay, I'm only asking, because I couldn't find it.
But they were, were you here for the presentation?
Yeah, but I was told when I asked the question where they were located, that their, the exact locations were on the city website for those locations.
The presentation would be on there. They're, they're certainly not finalized.
Okay, that's all I want to know.
Yeah.
And my next question has to, so, this clarification, there's no contracts put out then for any of the work being done on the arches? No professional contracts or anything? The town hall that you had mentioned was going to be in the fall, do you have a date yet for when this town hall is going to take place?
No.
No, is there a future decision on when you think you'll have a date for the town hall?
Soon.
I think, yeah. Can't get any more vague than that, I guess.
I think, you know, calendars.
Yeah. Okay, my next question has to do with, the city purchased software for the construction office and everything to make it more open to the public. But yet, when is that going to become available for the public to have visibility to this and use of this software?
Are you talking about the program?
S D L.
Yeah, that allows you to look up projects? Okay.
S D L, thank you.
S D I?
Yeah.
Paul, if you want to get, I know you're just getting started here, but.
There, there is, and I haven't looked at it fully. I just actually had a little training seminar with S D L, just to kind of get up to speed on kind of what we bought and, and the focus of it. I believe there is a link on the construction site to be able to check your permit status that's currently on there. I don't think it's highlighted good enough, and I think it needs some more forward-facing things, and that's kind of what I talked with S D L to kind of figure out what we had to do. So, that's one of the things I'll be working on, is, you know, they have a lot of different portal-facing stuff that provides a lot more information, so I'm going to be working with them and.
And I know, Paul, you're new, but, I mean, this has been almost over a year that we purchased, this is supposed to be up and running.
And, but see, a lot of it, but see, a lot of that takes time, working with each of the different departments to create the different forms and, and digitize them and, and create the workflow process. So, I know they've been working with the clerk's office, and, and I haven't had a chance to reach out to them to see where they stand with it. So, I, I hope over the next month or two that we're going to start rolling out a more forward-facing product that, that will bring that.
But, but Paul, can't you go on right now? Excuse me, Stacy. You can go on right now into the construction and zoning, and there's a link there. And then you go in and you register, is that correct?
Each resident would have to register.
So, you have to register as a resident, and you can see your own status, but you're not as a, as a, and I'm asking the question, as a resident able to look at other people's projects?
Correct. You're going to check on your permits and the things that you apply for.
Yeah, I think, and if I'm wrong, correct me, but I thought it was also that we were going to have it where, when things were approved, that people could go in and see if these projects were approved.
That's what I clarified.
Yeah.
Who was able to see what, you as a, as a res, sorry.
You as a resident could see where your application permit was or your request, but I don't believe that you, as a resident, can go and look at your neighbors. That's why I'm asking for clarification.
Correct, that, that is true. I mean, if you're asking about, like, things that get approved at planning board, you know, you know, those things would be.
No, not the planning, because a lot of things that get approved in the construction office never get to the planning or zoning board.
Right, yeah.
So, I think.
Only the person, only the resident that applies for a permit can go and check on what permits they've applied for. Like, if I apply, if I submit a permit for my house, you would not be able to go and check to see if I pulled a permit for that.
Okay, I thought, I thought that this software was going to be for the fact that people could see that these people had proper permits.
This is, I, the way it was explained to me was like a Domino's pizza oven tracker, which most people probably don't even know what it is. But, you know, it has a little graph at the bottom, your pizza's in the oven, you know, the pizza's out of the oven, the peach is being delivered. The, what, the goal was to, for, because many people have, you know, expressed, where is my application? And frankly, a lot of phone calls to the construction office as well. Well, you're, right now, your application's on this desk for this approval. Then it moves to this desk, you know, for that approval. So, the goal in, in that was to have kind of an online portal, but the applicant could take a look and say, okay, your application is right now with the flood, you know, floodplain manager, or with HPC, et cetera, et cetera. So, that was my understanding of the goal, not necessarily that you could see what your neighbor was doing.
But not that they were doing, but that, but that, they actually pulled a permit, you know, because I think a lot of people, you know, all of a sudden see some construction going up in some of their neighbor's backyard and go, hey, what, what's happening?
But Stacy, that would, those, those things would be operable, that, that you'd have to go in, and you couldn't do that online, so it would have to be operated.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments? Sure, take your time.
Laura McShay, nine-two-four, Washington. So, we have Lafayette Street, we have Lyra Street, we have Jackson Street, and we have Washington Street. I live on the Washington Street Speedway, and most of my neighbors would agree with me. It's nuts how fast people drive on that street, especially from the light where the post office is. They try to beat the light at Madison. There've been at least two accidents since the beginning of the year. Doesn't seem to matter if it's summer or winter, and it doesn't seem to matter if you're a resident or you're a tourist. Nobody follows the speed limit. So, please, I, rumor has it, you guys are going to be doing some repaving. Please consider a speed hump, stop, lighted stop signs, anything. It's really just a matter of time before some, you know, somebody gets killed. There's been dead dogs, you know, it's, it's just not good.
Definitely, we can assure you of that. Let me ask a question of city manager or Paul. We did just get in five LED speed signs. I reckon, I think you just said Elmira Street was one, which makes all the sense in the world to me. I would assume Washington would be somewhere on that plan.
Yes, Washington's going to be installed this next week.
Okay.
We put up the twenty-mile-an-hour speed signs, but, you know, people, it's like going down a parkway. I know it's supposed to be fifty-five miles an hour, most people are doing eighty, and it's just, that's just.
But I do think the speeds.
But our police department's doing everything they can. I mean, and it's tough for them to sit there with radar on a tight street like that. But I know we're doing the best we can, and those new signs, I hope, will slow people down.
Right.
Because we'll have those flashing signs, and hopefully, they'll pay attention. But you're right, and there's so much conflict out there with the golf carts and bicycles and.
Chief, would you like to address it?
Yeah, no, I do. I appreciate what the manager said, absolutely. We were afforded the opportunity to get the digital signs in speaking with your superintendent. Originally, the signs that he purchased, or were going to be purchased, were just speed flash signs. So, when we, manager and I met with him, we asked him to get the data signed. We spent a little bit more money for the data sign, so what we're going to do, once all of the signs are put up.
Explain that, chief, the data sign.
So, the data sign, so once all the signs are put up, all the speed signs are put up, they're not just going to flash and say, hey, you're going this fast. What it will allow me to do is, my lieutenant, Lieutenant Mazza, who's in charge of the patrol division, we're going to go out there and say, okay, he can plug his computer in, the surface probe we have, plug it in, and it'll give a data readout for the entire week, month, or day that we choose, and say, okay, during this time to this time, we're having speeders. And we can then target them, because people slow down, they see the cop car, they see the flasher. So, then we can maybe find the driveway, find some sneak spots to sit there during those times, and not all day, and not waste a day, but lock in and start to get, you know, maybe you have that guy that's speeding to work in the morning that we're going to grab him, or, you know, the transient people that come in and out, it's harder to, the people that are visiting. But let us get all these signs in place, work on it. I don't disagree that these, some of these roadways are speedways, and once we repave them, they're going to become worse than they, than they currently are. We've had accidents at that intersection you speak of. I do remember pulling that, working with the engineer as well. He's pulling data from our, or accident coverage from our CAD to tell us where the accidents are occurring. I know we speak with Mr. Churchill a lot as far as Lafayette Street, any other county roads. I don't disagree that we should start looking harder at some speed devices. Stop signs are not it. We've already went through this several times. Stops signs are not to control speed. That's, that's clear data from, from the, from the State Highway Commission on that. So, we'll do our best to continue that, and I apologize for the speeders, because it's, I hear it every day, and I see it, like, wow, do you not see how fast you're going? So, we'll do better in that area.
You have one up on, oh, I'm sorry, there's one up on Michigan right now, that you guys have on the right-hand side as you're heading towards the Coast Guard base.
Correct. That one also reflects that.
Yeah, I think maybe it might just need to be moved further down Pennsylvania, maybe on the other side, just to switch it up a little bit. Because what's happening is, it's, it's there, sometimes a car's parked in front of it, so nobody really sees it. The space that's right where the triangle is, when you come in off of Pennsylvania into Michigan, you know, someplace there, you know, Pennsylvania also got repaved, and it's now a highway.
It is.
Because there's no stop sign. So, people are flying down there, because it's a quick access point from Pittsburgh Avenue into town, and so, I mean, easily. So, I can fully appreciate the comments that are made, but just anything to sort of mix it up a little bit, so people coming in the other direction might now start paying attention once they get onto Michigan and further into town.
And I think having some, five more of these permanent LED speed signs will allow us to move those.
Yeah, they can move around, too. Eric and I, as superintendent of Public Works, bought them that they could be unbolted and put on different poles. The one you speak about on Michigan, we had a specific complaint from a resident there, and we've turned it twice just to see, we're recording data from that. But you're absolutely correct, we need to move it up a little further and get it.
I think on the other side of the street, just for the other way, just for a while, just to get a different, get people more paying attention to it coming down Pennsylvania. Thank you.
Absolutely. While I have to stand real quick, if I can, just wanted to circle back. Dennis, thank you for your comments. Dennis was out there, because it woke him, woke him up out of his bedroom when the young individual was struck by the vehicle. Two-fault accident there, so I just want to clarify, I know people, like, what happened here, whatever? Two-fault accident. The juvenile was riding a bike crosswise, not in the, you know, not to blame anyone, but to give you what happened here. Not in a crosswalk, not with a bike light, two kids on a bike, vehicle passing incorrectly, struck the, struck the child. The child's doing well. He's, he was flown out as a precaution, as we do, you know, and command the rescue squad for their quick response to the location, even as far as they were out in West Cape May. Got there, secured the patient, as well as our police officer. So, Dennis, thank you for that acknowledgement, I appreciate that. As well as the, circling back to the unfortunate boat accident, I want to speak about that real quick. Had a lot of phone calls on that in the last week or so, and I did actually, at the mayor's request, continue to update Mr. Jack Lord and Mr. Tom Carroll, who are our harbor masters. We, that evening was a very, very fast, very quick movie. We had a lot of things going on that night, the patrol division and the fire department, U.S. Coast Guard Fire Department, and the Tracy Center staff, as well as Town Bank Fire Company Dive Unit, New Jersey State Police, got to give credit to Towboat Benny from Towboat USA, or US, pardon me, and all of the manager's staff. We kept them updated as, as we were going along there. My condolences to the family of Mr. Chris Heitman. It was a very unfortunate accident there. Some of the contact or conversation I've had in recent, this week here was regarding the dredging. It was very specific as far as what happened here. We know what happened here, I'm not really going to elaborate on who's at fault. That will be vetted out through the court systems and through, through that process. But there was something in the way that struck this boat and caused the accident and caused the ending fatality. So, New Jersey State Police handles all boating accidents. The Coast Guard handles commercial boating accidents, so they are working in conjunction. This event was responded to by your, your first responders, because it was close to the Cape May side. Did it happen in Cape May waters? That's still unclear, however, because like, when talking with Jack and, and Tom, we don't know exactly where it struck and how it did, but we're working on getting that plotting and see their concern, our concern, and the mayor's concern, and the manager's concern, was that what was the dredging doing? Who was responsible for that? Tom and Jack are working on that. We are going to meet again with the Coast Guard base to see what that dredging facility was doing, where they were working, because it's rumored that they're in Avalon, they're here, they're here, they're storing their equipment. So, not saying they're doing something wrong, we just want to clarify, when they're in our waters, when they're dredging our, our areas, what they're doing. So, the harbor masters are working on that angle of it. I'll continue to keep the manager's office updated, as well as the mayor, who will keep the rest of council updated. So, again, my condolences to the family there, unfortunate incident, but again, respect to the. to the first responders that came out there. It was a very quick grab and a quick save for the other person that was on the boat that did make it. And again, it's unfortunate that it did happen there. Second thing here with regards to National Night. Mayor, thank you, and manager, thank you as well for helping us out with that. The manager budget pays for some of the product there, some of the bounce houses and things that go on there directly from city funds. It's a great community evening. We love doing it. I couldn't do without my staff. I don't necessarily take credit for this because I put it in the hands of Ally and Duran Hemaway, and they do it. All I do is go out and ask for money. That ask there is never, it's, I hate asking people for money. However, this community is so very forthcoming and grateful, and they give it. So anyone I ask for in this community, big business, little business, mom and pop shops, they all gave something. You know what I mean? All, you know, Hot Dog Tommy, to Congress Hall, to the Icona Group, everyone gave something, and they didn't say, well, what do you need that for? They just gave. They know what the night's about. They all come out, Cape Resorts, Madison Resorts, all of them come out, and they spread the joy. I wish we could do it, you know, two, three times a summer, but it's a large event that we put out there. So again, thank you for council's help with that, manager's office as well. You know, we couldn't do without your support and all the agencies, the fire department that came out to help us out there. It's not just the police department, it's Coast Guard, our training center. So we're very fortunate to have all of these agencies in our community. So it's huge, very huge. Again, and manager of all, thank you for everything you've done for us as well in this process. We couldn't do without you as well. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Counsel, may I speak to S D L for just a moment, if you don't mind? And not to belabor this, S D L, that discussion. And I'm going to have to meet up with Paul on this because my office is pretty deep into the S D L conversion at this point. And I do have to agree with Stacy that the original intent of S D L, part of it, was to have some accessibility to the public as far as looking up an address and being able to see what permits had been received and if they were open and closed, almost like a permit activity report that we issue for Oprah's and whatnot. And specifically, it's meant to assist, say, like, realtors, neighbors, anybody interested in maybe purchasing the property in order to cut down on the sheer amount of Oprah's that we receive specifically for property reports. So not to say that we have to do that. It is possible to do that with the public portal. So that's something that I'd want to meet with Paul and management to see how the city wants to unravel that, if at all.
Okay.
It wouldn't, they do this in all other towns. It's nothing sensitive in nature, but it is possible to do, and there is, I believe, a demand for it. Whether the city wants to offer that is another story, but it is possible.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, please, come on up. And I do just echo chief's sentiments. We offer our sincere condolences to Chris's family. I did meet with the family and Chris's mother, who does live here in Cape May. So, but again, we offer our condolences. Thank you. Pardon me.
Laura Callanan, Cape May, New Jersey. Here regards to the Waterworks Building. After the last presentation by CME, I was concerned about what was happening. Brief history on me, some of you knew, some of you don't. I was on the HPC since 1994. I went from regular member to vice chair to chair, and then I was elected city council, the first woman, in 1999. And I then went on to a national federal landmark program for the nation. All right? So I'm very concerned about the Waterworks Building. It came before the HPC back in 1995, '06, and '07. And there was a whole process we went through with those mayors that were involved. And that was a rotating chair. It was every year, there was a new mayor, so you had to make sure that they were always up to date. Metcalf Eddy was the one that we were dealing with. We dealt with the project at the HPC level. We created those two back doors that are squares, and we had to deal with the state because it was a change. They already knew it was a historic building. They had to be changed for two reasons. And the two reasons were for bringing in the new supplies, the bladders, the filters, et cetera. The second reason was for the potential addition that was going to have to go on to the back of it, because we knew in 2020 that we were going to reach our maximum, especially if Sew Point got built on, which now, thanks to civilization, it's not going to happen.
You were only off by, I think, a year. I think 2019 we were already, but yeah.
Yeah, you know. Thank God that happened.
Right.
But what concerns me is that it is a historic building.
And Councilman Meyer, you are correct.
Oh, Ms. Callahan, you're going to need a microphone, please. Can I help you pass anything out?
You're on from your way in. Okay.
This is for you, Erin. What I would like you to do is, this is the full reports that I have on the building, and I would like it stamped in into record, and I would like the rest of the council members, the new member, Paul?
Paul is our city engineer.
City engineer, and the city manager to please have a copy.
Of course.
All right. What's transpiring is that the building itself needs to be evaluated. The city of Cape May has the option right now to determine through a COE, which is Certificate of Evaluation, done by either the city of Cape May through the Historic Preservation Commission, or a citizen. And what this does, this evaluation is filled out and then sent to the State Historic Preservation